Hello, everyone. The time is 6:01. And we are here at City Hall for a special called Work Session. Today is Tuesday, March 16th. There is a quorum present. There will be no action taken this evening. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is citizens' appearance. We have one person that has signed up as Zoom. And then you have several people who want their letters read into the record? Okay. So how do you want to do? Which ones which?
Mr. Anderson first.
Mr. Anderson, are you available? Oh, Brianna, how are you doing? Mr. Anderson, would you please state your name and address for the record? And then you have, for our citizens' appearance, you have two minutes to tell us what you want us to hear. It says he's talking, but we're not hearing it.
I'm not muted.
There you go. We heard you.
Okay, did you get my name and address?
No, sir. Please, please repeat.
My name is Rob Anderson, and I live at 624 Inglewood Court. Proceed?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity to comment on this important matter. Governor Abbott's rollback of COVID-19 safety measures was ill-advised, and Capella's alignment with that decision should be reversed. COVID is still a public health crisis in Texas. The state is reporting over 4,500 new COVID cases per day and averaging 163 deaths per day. On top of that, so far, only about 10% of Texans have been vaccinated. The good news is, help is on the way. Extraordinary volumes of vaccine are being produced and distributed. It's now estimated that there will be enough vaccine to fully vaccinate every adult in the country by May 31st. Now is not the time to take our eye off the ball. The City of Capella must restore measures to enforce CDC guidelines, including requiring mask-wearing and social distancing. Capella should also be actively encouraging every eligible resident to be vaccinated as soon as possible, and should redouble its efforts to assist those who need help accessing the vaccine. I don't know how this became a political issue, but it's not. It's a public safety issue. I don't want to wear masks, but COVID is still raging through our state, and we can't let our guard down. Not yet. We have to stay the course to defeat this virus, so that we can all get back to normal. If we just stay the course, the country could be fully reopened by the Fourth of July. Then we can gather and travel and celebrate, and we can look back and know that we did the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Ashley, do you want to start?
Yes, ma'am. First email is, Dear City of Capella, as a resident of Capella, Texas, I would like us to continue to follow the science and require masks in city buildings until we get a higher level of people vaccinated. Our schools have been doing great with masks. Let's keep our city buildings safe as well. All my best, Giadorna Dow. She did not leave her address. Next email. Not one person in my family has been vaccinated, as we are not yet eligible. We have spent the last year being mindful of others, staying home or masking up, and doing our part to stop the spread of this COVID-19 virus and its variants. When Governor Abbott removed any state requirements for the basic common sense public safety protocols, he put us all in danger. Danger of sliding away from the hope that we see around the corner of a return to life, of a return to a normal life. Furthermore, he opened the floodgates for those in our community who do not want to do their part by simply wearing a mask to keep us all safe. As such, I am now not comfortable taking my money to any local business. When I cannot ensure that I will encounter a safe masked environment, I will stay at home. No more takeout from local restaurants, no more patronizing local coffee shops or getting my child her books from the library. If the city can set an example, it will help cities, it will help businesses cite the town authority and follow your lead. We can continue to spend our money in town, getting a family fajita dinner from Kelly's Texican, coffee from Golden Boy, or try the new Boba Tea Shop, finally. We've also been looking forward to the biscuit bar, but we will keep our money stagnant if we know we'll just encounter uncovered faces. Please consider that those who are annoyed by the masks are still out there spending anyway. But those of us who are protected by the masks are now completely back at home. Furthermore, anytime you permit people to congregate unmasked especially, the spread and mutation of the virus can occur. If we want these vaccines that are here are coming for the rest of us to remain effective, and we want to return to our normal life, then any single thing we can do to prevent the spread and mutation of this virus, we must do. Thanks for all you do. I don't envy you your decision-making during these times. Many thanks, Angela Webster. Next email. It is very unsafe to remove the mask mandate for City of Capella facilities at this time. Please reinstate it. Thanks, Bonnie Foss, 616 Inglewood Court, Capella, Texas, 75019. Next email. Capella City Council, I strongly urge you to heed science and not politics. Science has repeatedly shown that the wearing of masks is the best defense and offense against COVID infection. There have been numerous scientific studies to confirm this. And one only needs to look at Capella's public schools, where masks have been diligently worn to confirm that mask-wearing keeps COVID occurrence low. The governor of this state had made a huge error in repealing the mask mandate while COVID infection is still a risk. I hope you will minimize the damage from his ignorant declaration and continue to mandate masks in city facilities. I also hope that you will urge all city businesses to continue to require masks. You have the power to prevent unnecessary illness and deaths. Bonnie Baker, resident of Capella and CIST teacher. Next email. If for no other reason, the city should err on the side of safety and caution with mask guidelines for crowded areas and poorly ventilated buildings. To state a no-mask-required message is irresponsible. A mask does not identify a political position. It represents leadership of the people and the ability to positively influence the lives of individuals within the community that elected those to guidance protect. You must understand and care for those around you and move forward in steps as the virus is controlled through the rollout of the vaccine. Dennis McGill, 718 Stratford Lane, Capella, Texas, 75019. Next email. I would like to comment on the city's failure to protect its citizens by not requiring face masks in city-owned buildings. The lack of a state mandate does not force us to offer masking options. We require shoes in our facilities, and bare feet have much less potential to actually harm anyone nearby than going maskless. There are certain rules of etiquette and behavior that are acceptable and unacceptable in our facilities. And a rule requiring masks is simply showing concern for the well-being of others as other rules are intended to do. To say that we cannot require masks in the midst of a pandemic is ludicrous, and the enforcement excuse is no more of an issue now than it was before the rules changed on the statewide level. Most people will abide by a requirement, whether it is enforceable or not. We are hopefully in the last phases of a major pandemic, and to not require masks at this point makes no sense. None of us enjoy wearing masks. We're all ready for the end of the pandemic. We all want to get out more, but we're not there yet. Let's use our good judgment and common sense and require masks until the CDC recommends otherwise. This should not be a political issue. It is a matter of public health. That's from Amanda Davis. Next email. Dear city leaders, I have lived in Capella for 13 years. As a Texas native, I know Capella is very special, and I'm constantly reminding my kids that we are incredibly blessed to live here because a city like Capella is hard to find. However, I am very disappointed and disheartened that Capella is chosen against requiring masks in city buildings. This goes against all CDC and county recommendations. As someone working in public health, we are very tired. We deserve a break. Doctors, nurses, and healthcare workers deserve a break. City of Capella employees deserve the greatest protection possible while at work. Our state is 47th in the country for vaccination, and it is far too early to stop wearing masks. With spring break coming up, coupled with people removing masks, we could see a forced surge. However, if we can avoid a fourth surge, we may finally be on the way to digging ourselves out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Please rethink your decision. Thank you so much, and God bless. Claire Hess. Got two more emails. The city needs to follow CDC guidelines on masking, at the very least to protect city employees who do not have a choice of doing their jobs from home. If businesses, school districts, and courts have the option, it should follow that city governments do too, in spite of the wording on the governor's order. I have seen interpretations that say local governments can also require them in their facilities. Selfish and self-centered citizens who refuse to wear a mask can find other ways to do business with the city, just as I choose not to enter the library or art center as long as masks are not required. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Let's not screw it up. And last email. To whom it may concern. I am writing to object to the City of Capella's removal of the mask mandate on city-owned property. Against all public health advice, this move has been made too early. The city claims that this new policy is made to keep in line with the governor's GA 34, but in reality, businesses, schools, and cities may still require masks on their properties, similar to requiring that a visitor wear a shirt or shoes. The only difference I see here is that the use of masks during a pandemic can prevent illness and death. Without masks, we are not only harming the people on our city property, but also the families they go home to. Without masks, we endanger our families, and we are not a family-friendly community. As a public health professional, I am very dismayed by this turn of events. Does the city not care about the health of its employees, citizens, and visitors? As of March 8, 2021, only 5,169 of our residents were fully vaccinated, not nearly enough to remove masks from our mitigation strategies. To be clear, I am not requesting that we wear masks forever, but until we have higher rates of immunity within our community, I ask that you follow CDC guidelines and follow the science and think about those within our community we need to protect. One judges a society by how it treats its most vulnerable members. In 2021, that is more important than ever. Thank you. Taria Greenberg, MHS 401, Pecan Hollow Drive, Capella.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you to everyone who has contributed by sending in their emails to be read. The item on our agenda is discussion regarding the COVID-19 policy for health and safety requirements, including masks in city facilities. This is a work session, but what I would like to do is to have Tracy go through the process that was, that was gone through to make this decision, and then we can have our conversation. Okay? Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to have a full discussion with the council regarding a potential mask mandate for city facilities. In terms of kind of our decision-making, you know, last week during the city manager's report, I covered what the city had planned to do in the way of inviting the community back into our facility as a result of the governor's latest executive order, which lifted all of those mandatory COVID safety protocols, specifically the facial covering mandate. What I didn't cover was really our thinking behind that service philosophy that led us to the current position of not instituting the mandatory COVID safety protocols at city facilities. And so I appreciate the opportunity to walk the council through that this evening. In our minds, really, we had two primary guideposts that led us to moving towards an environment that did not include a mandatory mask mandate or the mandatory COVID safety precautions and protocols as we invited folks back into our facility. And that was, first and foremost, was our organizational culture of service. And the second consideration really was at the ground level in terms of practical enforceability. And so we had a lot of conversations around both of those items. So I want to cover the philosophy of service first, and then we'll get into the enforceability. And both of those are really tied together. We've worked really hard from the very start. So we look back to March of last year. We've worked very hard to try to marry our, the culture of service for the organization to how we were going to respond to all of the things that we were facing related to COVID. As a public entity, we have chosen to err on the side of serving everybody who comes to our doors, who are coming to our facilities, logging on, using our virtual services, really, at this point, regardless of whether they're wearing a mask or not. Our organizational culture reinforces that philosophy in terms of just why are we here and what is our purpose? I will tell you as a, throughout the entire experience from March until today, March to March, you know, up until last week, we were in an environment that either the county or the state was mandating some sort of protocols in terms of how we were to be operating. However, at a practical level, how we've handled the operation and serving the community hasn't changed at all. And so throughout the process and throughout this time, as we encountered individuals at any one of our facilities, because not all of our facilities have been closed the entire time. I think the senior center is the only instance where we had a facility that really has been closed for the full March to March. But really, anytime we encountered any of our patrons, our citizens, our neighbors, in any of our interactions as customers, we saw those opportunities, we saw those as opportunities to build relationships with those individuals. And so at the very beginning, this past, past summer, when we were getting a lot of calls about, you know, at this business, they're not enforcing masks, or I saw somebody over at the park, and they were too close together. And every time that we engaged with those individuals, whether that was our police department, whether that was our code enforcement, whether that was just our park staff, we saw that as an opportunity to help educate, to reinforce kind of what we are as a community. In almost every case, that approach has been very successful. In almost every case, it deescalated the situation. And we, we achieved voluntary compliance in terms of what it is that we were asking those individuals to do, whether that was masking, whether that was just adhering to the social distancing, adhering to the kind of strange traffic flow that we have in some of our facilities so that we don't have people commingling in and out of the building. So from the perspective of how successful have we been in order to get compliance for those few individuals that we've encountered throughout this time in COVID that have chosen not to wear masks? We've been really successful without having to resort to any of the more heavy-handed enforceability options that at some point were available to us and now today are no longer available to us. Which kind of leads us to the enforceability conversation. You know, in the past, if things were not necessarily enforceable, whether that be an ordinance or anything of that sort, those were the types of things that, as a staff, we've kind of worked hard to eliminate those things out of our repertoire because really, it doesn't make sense to have something on the books that you can't reasonably enforce. Based on the governor's most recent executive order, the mechanism for enforcement that is left to us is essentially escorting individuals out of the facility. If those individuals are unwilling to comply with the request in terms of putting on and complying with any of the COVID safety precautions and protocols that we have in place, we would have, we would resort to criminal trespass and then escort those individuals out of the facility. And they would end up going to the Carrollton Jail. That's a Class B misdemeanor once you get into criminal trespass. So I'll tell you our employees who are working on the front lines. One of the speakers indicated that they don't, we have some employees for whom working at home is not an option. And so from the perspective of how are we creating an environment that's safe for both the employees who are serving the customers as well as the customers who are coming in, we are still encouraging that everybody continue to follow all of the CDC requirements, masking, social distancing. You may have noticed the hand sanitizing station that, when you walked in, we have the temperature screening up front. All of that is touchless. All of that is considered the best practice in terms of how, what kinds of protocols that everybody should be doing. We are strongly encouraging everybody who enters into our facilities to go through that entire process as they come in. All of our signage indicates all of those same things. And we've had, as I've mentioned, very good compliance from our, our community as they're interacting with us. If I could, I'd like to share a little bit of data with you in terms of what of our, what our experience has been. So we've had a week of living in Capella and operating city facilities in an environment that does not have a mandated mask requirement or any other mandated COVID safety protocols. And so in our city facilities, so at the core, this past weekend, we had 412 masked visitors. We had 39 who were unmasked. There were no incidents with any of those individuals. Over at Wagon Wheel, we're averaging about 10 unmasked users per day. We've not yet had any incident with any of those users. For Wagon Wheel, we've essentially closed the entire pro shop, so all of the patrons enter and leave the facility through exterior doors and gates. The library, we're averaging about 150 to 200 visitors per day with one, anywhere from one to three unmasked patrons in that group each day. We have not had any incidents with individuals at the library. All of last week until Monday at our utility billing window, we had 21 people visit Town Center to pay a utility bill or to ask questions about a utility bill or that sort of thing. We had 19 who were masked and two that were unmasked. LSP, we opened for spring break yesterday. We had 26 citizens who entered the facility. All of them had masks, no issues. Over at 265, so our fire admin, engineering, and community development, so fire admin had three or four visitors, all had face coverings. Engineering had two individuals, both wearing masks. And community development had 14 visitors, and all of them were wearing a mask. The art center, we had two activities on Saturday. There were no unmasked attendees entering the building for either of those two activities. Over at the PD lobby, we've had about two or three people every day, and it's about 50/50 over there. The emails that we have received, those are almost evenly split at 50/50 in terms of pro-mask mandate versus non-mandate. And in terms of kind of what is the, what is the environment in which we are having this conversation from a Dallas County perspective? You know, the new cases for the past seven days, there were 2,341. Again, this is countywide, all of Dallas County. Those are down 30, that number is down 35% from the last seven days. Hospitalizations are down 32%. So we had 189 hospitalizations during the last seven. That's down 32%. Immunizations, we've got just shy of 454,000 people who have been vaccinated with at least one dose. Again, just Dallas County. We've got 241, almost 242,000 people who are fully vaccinated. And that represents about, just shy of 12% of people 16 or older who are fully vaccinated. So in terms of kind of what is that environment that we're operating in right now, in an environment where we do not have a mandate, by and large, the members of our community are being, they're compliant. They are respectful of their own health and the health of others around them. And they have been cooperative with us when we have requested that they, for whatever reason, if they didn't have a mask or they forgot their mask, when we've asked them, they have been very receptive to those conversations with our team members. So that's the experience that we've had thus far this past week and a little bit of an insight into the conversations that we've had around enforceability, knowing that up to this point, we've been unwilling to take that next step. And really, we've, we've not been forced to take that next step in terms of escorting our own residents and patrons out of a public facility. Certainly, from a legal perspective, and Bob is on the line with us tonight, there's no question about the council's authority to institute a mask mandate or COVID safety protocols within city facilities. Really, the question really all along has been, how practical are the enforcement options? And what is the appetite in terms of the scope, excuse me, the scope of what those enforcement options can look like? Because at the end of the day, if it goes far enough, we do end up in the criminal side of things where we've got a Class B misdemeanor for an individual that would refuse to leave a facility if they were asked to do so. And so that's, that's really where we have landed in terms of how we've handled the city facilities and the COVID safety protocols throughout the pandemic. And then from Wednesday until this one, until today, it's almost been unchanged. Everybody has been very, very cooperative, very compliant, and we've, we've not really had to hop through that hoop in terms of what is, what is that next step? And how far are we willing to go to enforce such a mandate?
Will you add, sorry, will you add one more part to that conversation about employees and what, how they feel and?
Sure. And, and so that is a huge, that's been a huge consideration for us. And when we talk about our organizational culture, we do, we know that our employees are the folks who are providing the service. And as we've gone through this process with COVID, we've, we've been actively engaging with our employees, particularly those who are on the front lines, providing that immediate service, really face-to-face with other customers and members of our community. And what we've done is we've, we've asked them to tell us what they needed in terms of infrastructure or PPE, changing our processes, anything that they needed in order to feel comfortable serving our community. We have done everything that we can to make every one of those requests possible. Anytime you have a group of people, you're going to have individuals along this spectrum of, I'm completely comfortable in this COVID environment versus I would like to stay home until COVID is no longer even here. And we have that same spectrum of employees, and they fall at different places on that spectrum. But what we have been able to achieve is an environment that really is, is driven by the comfort level of those employees, knowing that if I am encountering an individual who may or may not be wearing a mask, what will I need to feel safe in serving that individual? And those are the things that we have instituted throughout all of our facilities. I guess the last piece of that is each one of our employees knows that they've got the, they've got the permission, if they do feel uncomfortable, for whatever reason, as they're interacting with somebody who may not have, they may be too close. They may not be wearing a mask. They have the permission to politely excuse themselves from that interaction, and we will provide a different employee who can come and serve that customer. So from a service standpoint, we want to make sure that there is continuity of service, that all of the services that we have been providing up to this point, whether that's virtual, online, we are going to continue to offer those. So for those individuals within our community who do not want to come in or any of the in-person provision of services, we still have all of the, the virtual services that we've developed from COVID. Those are all still available to each and every one of our, our community members.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Tracy or the process that this decision was originally made?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, Ms. Leach, my question would be the concern about how we would enforce within a city facility. How would that be any different than if we were called to enforce in a private business who had decided to have a mask mandate?
You know, at a, at a practical level, the venue really matters not. The process would be the same. You know, for example, if we had an incident out in the front lobby here, certainly, the first conversation would be with the frontline staff members, so Barbara out front. first conversation would be with the frontline staff member, so Barbara out front. If she determined that this was escalating to a point that she was uncomfortable and this person needed to be escorted out, we would call our friends over at the police department who would come over. We would have a second conversation with those individuals, hopefully to de-escalate so that we did not get to a place where we were then getting to criminal trespass and escorting them out of the facility and out to Carrollton. That would be the same process that we would follow and that we have followed whenever we've been called to a private business, whether that's Tom Thumb or any of our restaurants or anything like that. So, I will tell you, in all of the calls that we've had for anything that's been reported from the past year, we have not, we have not had to do, excuse me, transport or get to that place of removing folks and citing anybody for anything related to safety protocols for COVID.
Any other questions? Yeah, John?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I understood the process of why you decided, or why the city decided not to mandate it, but I just wanted to get some, I guess, input from Mr. Hager, from any legal point, what you saw or what you, if there was anything that you had recommended to Tracy at this time, at the time, you know, before we decided to go ahead and lift the mandate?
Mr. John, we have not, I basically went over GA 34 with Mike, and I've also visited with Tracy about GA 34, and we've had the conversation that she has imparted to you today. I've had one conversation with Mr. Land, and I've had a second conversation with Ms. Leach, and she has accurately advised you as what my advice would be if you chose to have a mandate, a mask requirement for facilities, or you did not. So, I have nothing additional to add unless you have any questions.
From your, I guess, analyzing the GA 34, was it, I guess, was it advised that we could actually go ahead and still require masks in the facility?
Yes, there's a provision in the law that allows us to have a mask mandate for our facilities. The governor did not take that responsibility away from the city or from the county. What they did is they have precluded us or preempted us from ordering it to third parties and private businesses, but we still have dominion over all of our facilities, our parks, and all of our buildings and grounds.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have one more thing? Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I did want to mention that you have likely seen many news articles and things in the social media about different communities who have, some who are moving towards a mandate and some who have chosen to make that optional, a non-mandate. So, I just did a quick, quickened survey of some of our surrounding communities. So, on the mandate side of things, all of the large metropolitan areas, so Austin, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, El Paso, are all in the camp of instituting mandatory COVID safety protocols to include facial coverings. Here locally, Farmers Branch and Addison are in that category as well. For the communities in our area who are currently not requiring COVID safety protocols to include facial coverings, but are encouraging those, so very much, very similar to where we are right now, Lewisville, Tarrant County, Fort Worth, Frisco, Richardson, Grapevine, and there were some more that I tried to contact today to get updates, but did not. But, so clearly, there are, there are communities on either side of this issue, and each one is making that decision based on what they think is best for their community.
So, without any other questions, I'm going to turn it over to everybody to discuss. I know it's kind of hard to do this in this environment. We can't like see each other's faces. It's the hard part of doing a work session in this room, but let's open it up for discussion. John?
Yeah, Mayor, so, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, and I guess everybody by now knows that City of Dallas has decided to go ahead and require masks, but if we're actually looking at our demographic, it shows that we actually have, you know, out of the 41,000-plus residents that we have, CDC guideline has said that as you get high over, at the age of 50, the risk gets higher, and from, what is it, 50 to 64, 25 times more hospitalized, 40 times more facing death. 64 to 74 is actually 35 times more, 1,100 more to face death. 75 to 85 is, 84 is actually 55% more to be hospitalized and 2,800 times more to face death. 85 plus is actually from 80 times more to be hospitalized and 7,900 to be facing death. And then, with the Capel residents, we're looking at 45 to 54, about 6,800 people here, residents here, about 16.42%. 55 to 64, about 6,500, 15.76%. 65 to 74, age, 65 to 74 is actually 3,000, about 7.28%. 75 to 84 age group, 862, 2.08%. And 85 and above is 297, which actually equates to about 17,504 residents in that category, which equates to 42.27%. That's out of 41,290. And, you know, if we're talking about trying to be looking out for those that are vulnerable, and I understand a lot of people do want freedom to choose, but at the same time, if we're here to represent some of them that are actually in need of our representation to protect the vulnerable, I think we actually have to think the consideration about those, how are we going to protect them if we just continue on with this pattern? So, that's just my thought on that part.
Anyone else? Park?
Yeah, you know, the primary function of the city is to provide public safety for all of its residents, and I think this, this line that was crossed from operations into policy has put our residents at risk. You know, you were citing some statistics over at the core that 39 people didn't wear a mask while 412 did. Well, those 39 put the other 412 at risk for contracting COVID. And I believe it's imperative that we've got to enforce the mask mandate for our public buildings. You know, the at-risk numbers, 20% of the deaths that have occurred in the U.S. are under the age of 65. So, I mean, there's still a lot of people out there who have not gotten vaccinated. I think we're right now looking at 20% of the U.S. has gotten at least their second vaccine, and there's say, there's, you know, rough estimates that 20% of the population has gotten COVID. So, there's still a large portion of our population that are at risk, and I think we have to take every measure to make sure that we don't expose them to that risk. You know, we talk about what the remedies are if people don't comply. I mean, we can deny them entry. If necessary, we can remove them. I think we can also institute fines. I believe so. Is that correct, Bob? I know we cannot imprison anyone, and I'm not saying that that's what we would want to do, but I believe that we can levy fines.
That was true at one time, but it appears to be no longer true that there can be a criminal sanction. The Attorney General has threatened to file suit against anyone that imposes any type of fine or penalty.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we are, Councilman.
All right. I'm with you on that then. So, we can deny entry, we can have them removed. I mean, a quick call to the police station, which is within minutes from any of our facilities, can remedy the situation if people don't want to comply, but it's our responsibility to protect the public. I mean, we do it with fire, we do it with police, we deal with EMS, and we also ought to do it with policy. And that's all I have. Thanks.
You next, Brianna.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's so many issues that I come into these meetings with a pretty clear head as to where my thinking is. This is an issue that I could argue both ways, and as you have heard tonight, our community is divided on it. I guess the thing that bothers me about the discussion is the virility of the discussion with people saying others are ignorant or Neanderthals or that sort of thing. That doesn't add to our discussion at all. I think intelligent people can look at the data two different ways and come to different conclusions, so I think we would all be better suited to have that discussion and come to a discussion, a decision that we can live with. I think what we're talking about here is, much as anything, is timing, and I think you can argue that the governor may have been too soon or not too soon. I do think it's an interesting discussion as to when we say, let's follow the science. To me, that's kind of like being told when I'm negotiating contract to, I've got to follow my attorney's advice. There's often much more to the discussion from a risk analysis perspective than just the attorney's advice. There's a business decision, and in this case, I think that's what we're dealing with. It's a matter of timing and at what point have we turned the corner enough that it's safe to have individuals exercise their constitutional rights of freedom of assembly? You know, I do hear that the city's different than businesses because people have to come to the city to do business. Frankly, that's not true. Anything that you can do here in this building, you can do online or via the phone. I've double-checked that with our staff, and that's the case. I do have concerns about our staff, and I do think our leadership of our staff has done a good job of making sure that individuals are not forced into situations in which they're uncomfortable. We're adding UVC lighting in this building. We've got these plexiglass shields everywhere. We enforce social distancing. So, I do think that the city has done a very good job from the beginning of trying to protect our staff and give them the freedom to feel like they are safe. So, as I said to start with, I think this is an issue of timing. Are we far enough along that spectrum to where we're comfortable? It's been said our primary job is to protect citizens. That can be taken too far, and don't quote me on that because that could be taken out of context, but hey, if we don't want traffic fatalities, let's eliminate automobiles. It would be my example. You can take that too far. At some point, we've got to move on. But after thinking through this a lot, reading a lot, both social media and emails from folks on both sides of this issue, I do think we've got to err on the side of caution. And so, I think it's my recommendation that we maintain or reinstitute the mask mandate, but that we continue even on an every-two-week basis in our work sessions to revisit that and to look at numbers of vaccinations, hospitalization rates in the county, et cetera, and be prepared at the very first opportunity to eliminate that and give the people of the city the freedom to move around like our Constitution says they should be able to. So, that's where I'm at. After a lot of thought, I thought initially it's time to move on, but I think we need to be a little cautious, but I would request that if we do that, that we revisit it regularly.
Thank you, Karen. First of all, Gary, very, very well stated, because I think I would start with kind of where you ended on, I want to err on the side of caution. I think the other, first of all, Tracy, thank you for providing context around the decision-making. I think, I will admit that I left last week's council meeting and I was a little surprised we had just kind of gone to complete open and felt like maybe I had missed something along the way, conversation, or, you know, hadn't maybe heard that there was going to, that we were going to kind of go to that extreme. And so, really pondered that and started to think about kind of our, you know, as Mark and John talked about, our citizens and the fact that, you know, we do have a lot of citizens that fall in some of these different categories that are, whether they have compromised immune systems, their age, right? We have a lot of elderly, just thinking through and thinking about that we really want to be a city about looking out for people's public safety and health, and we also want to be inclusive rather than exclusive and making sure that we're not providing an environment where people can no longer feel safe going, coming into our city buildings and our libraries and our, you know, town hall to pay bills. And so, I think, you know, again, Gary very well said, I think it's, I think it's timing. I do want to err on the side of caution. I do want to make sure people feel safe. I think it's important for us to have, you know, as Gary mentioned, regular conversations, and maybe it's a phased approach. As an attorney, I know there's arguments on both sides. I want people to have freedoms, but we're also in some very unprecedented times with a very serious situation, and we know that from the number of unfortunate fatalities that we've had due to this pandemic. And so, again, I appreciate the fact that, you know, staff has thought through a lot of these different options and has put a lot of guardrails in place. But again, I think whatever we can do to protect our citizens is our responsibility. This isn't a forever, you know, it's not like we're putting a stop sign somewhere where people don't want it, or they, we're not putting a speed bump in the middle of a neighborhood and it's a permanent. This is really a precaution that I think is important for us to take, and I would like to see us reinstate the mandatory masks until further notice. And as Gary said, I'm open to having the continued conversation, making, maybe making it a phased approach and thinking through the pros and cons along the way to make sure that we're always keeping our citizens' health and safety at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Mayor? Thank you. Tracy, I really appreciate you talking to us about what the city's done, what the staff has done. I would expect nothing less, and I think it sounds to me like the outcome of your efforts have served us well and that we really haven't had any problems per se. have served us well and that we really haven't had any problems per se. I think if we have a mask mandate or not, I don't think it makes a wet. I think that our people are smart enough to know, and these are the old folks too, that they know what they need to do to protect themselves at this point. They've had an entire year to practice. And I don't think that if we do this or don't do it, it's not going to really make any difference. And I think that probably we're all getting enough of this bootjack stuff from Washington, DC that we don't want to pile on, just one more thing. And, you know, that's just a personal, it's a personal thing. It's a personal thing for all of our citizens. But to me, we can do it, we can not do it, but it's not going to make a wet.
Well, I agree with the honorable down there. We see it in all of our locations that people are using masks. We see it in restaurants when people are not required, which I always think it's very interesting that you're required to wear a mask when you go in and sit down and then everybody takes their mask off. I think that's very odd. But I've been in locations where the business owner says they do not require a mask and everybody is masked. I think individuals are making choices. And I think the vast majority of people are making the wise choice. And so to me, the first thing that I asked was, what kind... I have not heard about any issues. No, there are no issues. Are people wearing masks? Yes. The guy that's pumping iron in the core? I can understand where he wouldn't want to wear a mask, but what did they do at the core? They built, I don't know, the blue tape on the floor to make sure that that person, if they're inside that box, they're six feet away from everybody. So I think the staff did a fabulous job in anticipating, and then when seeing something happening, okay, we need to protect the people around that because that makes sense that they're not, they're huffing and puffing, so it makes sense that they're not wearing a mask, but at the same time, people need to stay away. So I too applaud the staff. And, you know, the people that don't wear a mask are going to walk in whether there is a requirement or not. And so they're going to have to be dealt with the same way. So, and the city staff does what's necessary to de-escalate those situations. So I think that was part of, although they haven't specifically said that, I believe that that's part of their process when they were making this decision, was this is Kappel and people are going to do the right thing. So that's my two cents. Biju?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I have a question for you. Can you hear me okay, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Attorney General Paxton filed a lawsuit against the City of Austin, and I believe the judge suspended two more weeks of mandatory mask in city buildings. Is that correct?
Yes, the Austin, in that case, the mayor ordered that the masks were mandatory throughout the city, not just city facilities. That's what drew the ire of Attorney General Paxton.
Is that on the... It was suspended for two more weeks is based on the merit? Or is it just giving two more weeks to review the case? Or what was the conclusion?
I think they gave them time to come into compliance with GA 34.
So you also mentioned that city, as a city officials, we can mandate mask in City of Kappel buildings.
Correct.
Is that, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Enforcement is, I heard from Tracy, that if situation escalate to a level, we have to call a police. You said misdemeanor?
It's a Class B misdemeanor for criminal trespass.
Just for clarification, Mr. Matthew. What that is, is criminal trespass is someone does not obey either the rules of the business or the property owner. You don't have a constitutional right to be present in a private business or in a city facility necessarily. The rules are if, like, for example, it's very common in making this argument about masks, people say, well, you have to wear a shirt and shoes and clothes when you go into a business. They have the right to impose those restrictions on their patrons. If you refuse to adhere to that minimal dress code, the property owner, the business owner, has a right to ask you to leave. If you do not leave voluntarily, then either you have to issue a document called a criminal trespass warning or a local law enforcement authority issues that criminal trespass warning. If you refuse to leave after being given that criminal trespass warning, then you're taken into custody and arrested for violation of that part of the penal code. And that's what Tracy has reiterated to you. That would be the enforcement mechanism. If you have a requirement in order to attend or gain access to our building, then if you fail to comply with those requirements, you would then be asked to leave. If you do not do so voluntarily, then either a city official would issue a criminal trespass warning and/or the police would issue the criminal trespass warning. If you again refused after receiving that warning, then you would be placed in custody and taken to jail. It's a Class B misdemeanor.
You also mentioned that we are not authorized to find anybody. Mark was asking that question.
Correct. I'll read that since there was some confusion. Under GA 34, even in a high attainment area, it says that no jurisdiction may impose confinement in a jail for violating any order in response to COVID-19. So any social distance requirement, capacity requirements that would be imposed, no confinement in jail. Also, no jurisdiction may impose a penalty of any kind for failure to wear a face covering or failure to mandate that customers or employees wear face coverings. So there can be no civil or criminal fine imposed to that, which is what a Class C misdemeanor does. So that's a little bit different also than what we have seen at various times throughout the last year regarding face coverings.
Thank you, Bob.
Those are the requirements Governor Abbott.
Thank you, Bob. I just wanted to say, those of who are watching online, we as Councilmembers received a number of emails from our citizens. Many of them are supporting this rule, many of them are opposing it. So we got, we heard from enough residents on this subject matter. We are going through this process to making the decision, what is the next step for us? Me personally, I believe in science, I believe in data. I also believe in the Kappel culture of service. We are here. One of the main reason or responsibility as an elected official is to safety and security of our citizens. Me personally, my wife is a medical professional, so I hear a lot of stories about people going through difficult times in hospitals and other places due to COVID, and some people even close to us passed away. So I also would like to err on the caution side. If it's possible by law and going forward, that would be my preference for the safety and security of citizens. Thank you.
Wes, did you want to say something?
Thank you, thank you, Karen. You know, Governor Abbott abolished the mask mandate a week ago. And I've been asked, you know, did I agree or disagree with that? Quite honestly, I can't argue with his decision. He had 254 counties across the state. We've got 14.7 square miles. There's a little bit of difference in scale. A large area of his responsibility are rural counties that quite honestly have a very low rate of COVID infection. I'm not saying it's not there, but it's very low. And he's responsible to those counties, just as he is to those counties like Harris County and El Paso and San Antonio and yes, even DFW and the Kappel area. I think our situation here is a little different. While we are in Dallas County, our rate of infection in Kappel is low. And even Dallas County has shown a significant decrease over the last couple of weeks. And we're all hopeful and praying that it continues to go down. I believe that the increased level of immunizations, especially with the 50/50 age group that John John was talking about, is going to significantly help. Of course, we've still got probably about a month before that kicks in. And, you know, while I really hate to infringe on our citizens' freedoms, I really don't want to see us hurt our citizens' health and welfare as Mayor Protim Hill was talking about. I really believe that our foremost and primary responsibility is to our citizens' health and welfare. And that's got to be on the forefront of our mind. But when I take a look at what is also in account in the city, we don't believe that we've been able to identify a single area of city business that can't be handled remotely. Is that correct?
Probably with the exception of being able to literally go to the core to work out with the equipment, you're probably correct.
And that's a good point because I do go to the core multiple times a week. I wear my mask when I go in, everybody else does. The social distancing there is, quite honestly, I think only one-fourth of the equipment is in use because of the distancing. They require that we clean the equipment before we get on it and after we get off. And then a city staffer comes behind us and does the same thing. I've been doing this for months. And while I was a little bit nervous at first, I became very comfortable with the process and just watching the level of cleanliness. I'm a bit surprised to hear that about 10% of the participants at the core are not wearing masks. I haven't seen that. I certainly wear mine there. So, you know, all of our city's employees are wearing masks. We're enforcing social distancing. We have plexiglass shields in place. We're undergoing rigorous cleaning processes. And so, you know, as far as the city facilities as large are safe, I still have to come back and think that, you know, it's still a personal choice what we're doing. My personal opinion, even if we mandated a mask rule, I don't think we would catch all of the participants. One of the things that, a ordinance or a rule or even an opinion, it's like we've been discussing, you know, it's the physical removal that would be the end item, and that's not something that we won't want to go through. So I'm going to end up like Councilmember Long said. I don't know that we've got the ability to really make a significant change in people's behaviors or influence the outcome. However, I do strongly encourage all of our citizens to wear masks. I encourage them to keep their social distancing, maintain clean, our hand washing at recommended intervals, and basically use their common sense and their behaviors. And I think that will do us more than anything else we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. I can count. And so I'm hearing a consensus that we would like to move toward requiring masks. My question is, are we talking about indoor facilities, not outdoor facilities? Mark?
Yeah, I think if you're outdoor playing tennis, there's no reason to wear it. But if you're in the pro shop, put on your mask.
Okay, yeah. And that's, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Mayor, Karen?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to stipulate that the core maintains its current level of mask usage while you're in the cardio room or in the weight room. Those masks are not required as long as you're on the equipment. I want to make sure that we don't lose that as well.
Does anybody have a heartburn with that? If you are in your space and you are working in the weight room, you're in your space, can you take your mask off?
My opinion, no. I mean, I think Councilmember Mays, you're very familiar with fluid dynamics and all the studies that the virus hitches a ride on microscopic particles in the air and just filters throughout the thing. And there are numerous studies that show that. Now, if there were MIR 13 filters in there, that certainly helps a great deal. I don't know what level of filtration they have. I don't know that we have UV treatment in there now.
Correct, we do not, we do not. Brianna?
I have a quick question. What have we been doing in the core? Because I know what, like, the YMCA is doing and Texas Family Fitness and some others, but what were we doing prior to the no more masks for the core in particular, in the workout area?
Before the new order?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know?
Yeah.
Yes, it was very similar to what Councilmember Mays had described to us. So coming into the facility, we've required patrons to wear masks. If you are on that cardio equipment in your space, you do have the option to take that mask off. Do we, on the weight room?
Yes.
Yeah. So same thing kind of in the weight room. And how we've managed that facility, as the mayor had mentioned, what we've done is managed that through spacing, through the social distancing. And so a lot of our equipment is moved from where it traditionally has been in the past. We have equipment that is roped off that you cannot use just based on the spacing and the equipment available. And so that's how we handle that. All of the sunshine room has been closed, the meeting rooms are closed. We have, really up to this point, it's been just the workout area. So the parts of the facility that were generally designed for, you know, come in and have a snack, and we've got the tables and all the areas for gathering traditionally have not been available. So it really is about coming into the facility, working out, and then leaving. The locker rooms were not available for use in terms of showering and all of that stuff. We do have restrooms obviously open, but the locker rooms for changing and all of that have not been available during this time.
So if we went to pre-government or governor's order, it would be like what Wes had described?
So Mayor, if we write this, this Bob, so that it would be whatever the protocols were for the core prior to the issuance of GA 34?
Okay. Okay.
So we understand what we're talking about. I think it might make it easier for us to...
Remember, we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just giving guidance.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure we give you what you need for any further debate and decision.
Okay, thank you. Gary, did you have something? John?
Mr. Hager, I had a couple of things I want to clarify with you.
Yes, sir.
A little while ago, you mentioned about the, I guess it was the GA 34, Section 2B2, where you talked about no jurisdiction may impose confinement or jail or penalty.
Yes.
But I'm seeing this as the headline of Number 2, where it says, "In any county located in an area with high hospitalization." The hospitalization definition is actually any area where there's seven consecutive days of exceeding 15% hospitalization.
Correct.
For DFW, the last time we were over 15% was actually February 18. For DFW, the last time we were over 15% was actually February 18th, which was 15.02. And since that time, we haven't hit over 15%. As of yesterday, it's 6.95%. So we're not in that area. So.
And that's, but what I was reading to you is the most lenient, the most lenient standard. If you go back, since we're not in a high hospitalization area any longer, there can be no penalties of any kind.
Right, so I mean, basically two would not apply because we're not in that, we're not in that anymore. Right? So there is a possibility of a penalty, I guess, so forth.
No, he said no penalties.
It's even more restrictive if you're not in the high hospitalization area.
Okay.
How that's been read and how that's been interpreted by both the Attorney General and Governor's office.
Okay, because if you look at number one, it says not, this is talking about counties that are not in a high hospitalization. Number one talks about that. And then it gives you definition of high hospitalization, which is over 15% for seven consecutive days. And then it goes to number two, talking about if you're in a county and it has subsection of all those things, if you're in that high hospitalization. So in essence, two doesn't really apply to cities that's not in high hospitalization area.
Well, okay. But you have to understand, GA 34, there's been no orders. All the orders have been withdrawn. There's no opportunity for the penalty. You have to go back and read the other orders as well. You can't just take this order and read it alone. So you have to look back at what the governor thought he could do or couldn't do in the earlier orders and what was imposed and not imposed in earlier orders. In the earlier orders, Governor Abbott would not allow any city to impose any jails, sentence or any fines by any jurisdiction. And so that changed after there was the, what I call the false spike, when he reinstituted a mask mandate and then allowed us to impose fines, or he imposed fines, but no jail as the penalty for the face covering mandate. So you have to kind of read it with, reading all other 32 GAs, if you will, not just this one alone.
Gary?
So if we can, I'd like to go back to try to finalize the core discussion. You know, I've spent a lot of time this last year looking at this illness in my line of business and whether droplets can be carried in the airstream or not in the airstream. I think the general consensus is that the droplets large enough to carry the virus do not get carried in the airstream. You can find some studies in some restaurants with very high velocity air that occurred or in certain hospital situations where there's aspiration where that can occur. But in general, that's not the case. So I'm not as worried about that. I think the core, though, is just like a restaurant. You ought to be required to wear your mask till you get to your workstation. And then just like eating is difficult with a mask, working out is difficult with a mask, you ought to be allowed to work out and then the equipment gets cleaned up and then you need to wear your mask out. I mean, if we're not going to allow that in the core, why are we allowing it in restaurants? It's basically, to me, the same situation. So I would encourage us to go back to what we've been doing for the last 12 months, which seemed to work very well, is require mask in facilities with the exception of the core, which seem to work just fine.
How does, how do people feel about that?
I'm good with it.
You're good with that?
We're good with that.
You're good with that?
If that's the only way we can get a consensus.
And so we're not, we're talking about indoors only. The cores basically staying the way that it was pre the last order. And what was it?
Well, I do have a question on protocols. So I know the bulk of this conversation has been centered around masks and facial coverings. There are a host of other COVID safety protocols that are available. Do we want to just have this strictly for masks? Or is this something that is a broader conversation about COVID safety protocols that we are going to mandate in city facilities? For example, temperature screenings, that sort of thing.
Mayor, if we're going back, pre-GA 34, wouldn't it make sense to go back to the way it was before with everything? Not just mask?
The way, the way that it was before is those items were available. Now, the social distancing and the masking
Right.
were required. And then the temperature and everything else was available.
Sure.
Is that okay?
I just wanted to have clarity around exactly what we're talking about in terms of the protocols that we are referring to in terms of mandatory or not. Because at this point, we would be walking through an enforcement process with individuals who are unwilling to comply. So I want to make sure that we are all very clear in terms of which protocols we're enforcing. So as long as we're good on masks and social distancing, that was consistent with the previous order, that is, that's very clear for us in terms of what that looks like because that's what we've been working on for a really long time.
And from my point of view, city staff, the police officers, management has done an outstanding job de-escalating all situations. And that, in my view, is always the first course of action. Yes, Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also just like to reemphasize that I'd like to revisit this every time we get back together. I don't think we need to spend an hour and a half talking about it, but just to check in to say, based on the progress we're making, is everybody still where they were at? So that as soon as possible, we can move away from this.
I agree with that, Gary.
Is everybody okay with that as well?
Does that mean twice a month, basically?
Regular scheduled meetings?
Well, yeah, exactly. It may be, I mean, we've got a five-year plan meeting coming up. That ought to be an agenda item, just anytime we're together at an official meeting.
Okay.
Just for clarity, to maybe reiterate what you've just mentioned, Mayor. Certainly, removal of a patron out of our facility is the last resort. I mean, our experience up to this point would indicate that that's going to be something that is not going to be necessary. Our community has been very compliant and cooperative and respectful. So certainly that is kind of like that eminent domain process. At the end, there is kind of the ultimate step that you can take. It's the very last step. And so that's how we would continue to have those conversations with individuals as they come into our facilities.
And I am guessing that you're going to have little issue with this because everybody's already wearing masks. The signs will be just a hair different. They will be, instead of, you know, please protect us, protect our employees and yourself, wear the mask. It's, masks are required.
Bob, you've got to, you've got your hand right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was one other question. As we look at this, in prior to GA 34, there was capacity limitations on facilities, Mayor. So maybe appropriate under the current?
Bob, you're taking it a little bit too far. What we're talking about right now is masks.
Okay, all right. I didn't know whether that was, because that's a CDC requirement as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss something.
Yeah, we're talking about masks.
The council would like.
Yep.
You were talking about going back to the conditions that the core had prior to the GA 34.
They still have to have the spacing and all of that stuff, yes.
Okay.
Which they still have now. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Just for you guys, right now, there are probably about six people in the entire cardio area that normally holds 35. I mean, it's very, very spaced out.
Yeah, the people that are uncomfortable going to the core are still uncomfortable going to the core and probably will be uncomfortable going to the core until such time that either, until we're ready to open it up, probably. But, okay. Did we miss anything, Tracy?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Nope.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for those of you who reached out to me to make sure that we had this conversation. And there is nothing else before us. So it is 7:22 and we are adjourned.